Good morning, everyone. And we're here today to have our Tuesday, September 1st, 2020, Jackson County Board of Supervisors meeting. And with us today, we have Lisa, our county auditor, Luanne, our executive assistants in the background. We have Jack, Larry McDevitt, Jack Willie, and Mike Stanis are your county supervisors. And this is an early start meeting. We started at eight this morning. We also have with us Sarah Davenport is with us this morning, and Becky Chapin, our human resource director. And first item on our agenda is Becky, our human resource administrator.
Good morning.
Director Administrator, which one do you like better? I'm sorry. Welcome also to the, anyone from the public or the media that is available online. I see Kelly's online with us today, and that's all I see. So, good morning Kelly, to you also.
So we are here this morning to discuss a personnel matter in which the employee that we are here to discuss has not, has chose not to participate in this meeting. I've been outside waiting for her since eight o'clock. She is not here. I see she is not tuned in. The reason for the meeting today was the employee had requested a review of their employment termination. Given the fact we have received no further follow-up from the employee, unless the board has any discussion they would like to have without her, I would request board make a motion to authorize the chair to sign written notice to the MP, letting them know that their decision on their termination has not changed. The intent of this morning's meeting was to allow her the opportunity to come in front of the board and provide any information that she feels may be in support of.
And she requested the meeting.
She did request the review. That is what the protocol is said.
And almost 10 minutes after eight.
And she did not submit any information or paperwork as far as her rebuttal as far as.
I have not received anything personally, no.
Yeah, and it is, I have 8:08, so.
I would make the motion that the termination stands because she can show up this morning, or whatever your comment was.
Okay, I'd second that. I have a motion and a second to continue with the termination as presented and send a certified letter to the person involved. All those in favor say aye. Oppose, nay. Motion carried. So Becky, you're still on deck.
I actually think that was all I had. I will hand the order.
Okay, so that motion was made for the, yeah. Okay, so we did start a little early, and I don't know if we want to just proceed with our meeting, if we can do that, if anybody else is available or wants to be part of this.
If you want, I can do my meeting. You know, it's up to you. If you want to do my portion of the, yeah, I was gonna say, if you want to.
Yeah, Sarah, would you want to? Thank you, Becky.
Welcome. Good morning. It feels weird for me up here.
Good morning.
Us as well.
So a couple of things I wanted to bring to the board's attention. The first one is involving jury trials. As you're probably aware, Supreme Court suspended all jury trials back March, and has authorized them to resume on September 14th. Jackson County will not have one September 14th, but we do have trials scheduled October 12th, November 2nd, December 7th, January 4th. Due to the social distancing issues guidelines, jury selection cannot occur in our courtroom. We just said we do not have the space. So I met with Mark Lawson, our district judge liaison, and Kim Test, the clerk. We met at Onward with Rich Hall and discussed using that auditorium. It seems that it will work out well. They have the projection screen, so we can play the video for the jurors, we can space the jurors out, and we can use microphones so that they can hear us. I have worked out a payment agreement with Onward. I'm going to pay what they charge the schools, which is their lowest rate. So they have a for-profit, they have a nonprofit named school rate. So I'm going to pay their school rate, which is $350 per trial. I have asked to be invoiced following the trial. So in the event that the trial settles or gets continued, I would not be, I would not pay for that until after we've actually used the space. He's been, Rich Hall's been very good to work with and very accommodating. One of the things we're going to have to do is the clerk's office is going to have to go in and kind of mark out which teams have to sit in, and he will, we can do that in the time of the beforehand, which is very helpful, because I just don't have to come down Sunday to do that for a Monday trial. I plan to use my collection funds. So the fund, the extra 5% that we get once we meet our threshold goes into a fund that only I can use. And I plan to use those funds, and I have checked with Attorney General's Office, and it would be an appropriate use of those funds to pay for this venue. And I'm not sure how long we're gonna have to do this. I'm guessing it's gonna be at least May of next year that we're gonna have to have this social distancing.
So is there any money available that cares that with COVID?
Not that I'm aware of. I guess I haven't looked at it that.
I mean, it's COVID related, so.
Yeah, it's COVID related.
Yeah, we should really check on that. My other question is, so obviously, you need security there.
Yes, and I have talked with the chief deputy about, for jury trial, we're gonna call in a part-time.
Security officer.
Security officer anyway. They simply will start their day at Onward instead of here.
So we also need security here. So we're gonna call in two, we have two temporaries or two.
Yep, and I gave all the dates of the scheduled ones to Steve, so he can actually schedule them. You know, he can schedule ahead of time, so that they know who's working.
So again, that's, that's an expense related to COVID issue, so we should maybe.
Well, that's not exactly, because they would be called in anyway. Because whenever we have a jury trial, we always have a second person.
But if we consider a different location, maybe we can include it somehow too.
I see. Well, I will, I will review the care responding and see if that's available.
So do you need permission to do so, or?
No, I'm just letting you, the board, know, because you'll probably see the claims up through here. And also, I wanted you to be aware that, you know, I'm sure you've heard the jury trials are starting. We're now going to have an influx of 50 people in the courthouse. We're gonna be handling all of that at Onward. When we start the actual jury trial, we will come back here, but we'll have 13 jurors. So we'll only have additional 13 people plus
I myself certainly feel it's a great option. I mean, I commend them for letting you use that facility, and, you know, I think it's just to keep the flux of people coming in this courthouse. Yes, I think it's a great option. So we wish to you for getting that.
Thank you. So the other piece of information is a little bittersweet for me. As you all know, Rosie's been talking about retirement for like two or three years now. She has officially chosen to be the second at two hundred and twenty, after retirement date. She's planning to go off time at the end of December, beginning of January. She and Joe like to go down to Arizona, and so she's gonna take some, she'll have about three weeks that she'll be working in that next, in the 2021, and then she's gonna use out her accrued benefits rather than being paid out for them. She's gonna use them. Since she will be here three, three weeks after she takes that break, my plan is to wait to hire somebody to replace her until she comes back. So I will start the hiring process with Becky. I will meet with her, and we'll discuss how we're gonna advertise, and timing as far as advertising and whatnot. And then my plan is to have that person start the first day that Rosie comes back from vacation, and work those three weeks with her, so that she can train her, and then her or him, train a new person. And then, so I will have that three-week overlap. I do have funding, I did budget for that. I budgeted to have them have a person work with her. The pay will depend on experience, and once I have a candidate, I will come back to you as you authorize the pay for that position, and ask you to approve the pay, again, based on experience.
Do, do we have a current job description for that?
I am working on updating it, because it was written in '85, and Rosie does a lot more.
I mean, I'd like to see, I guess, or just read it.
Sure, once I'm done, I can email to the board. So Rosie is going to be retiring early. She will not yet be 65, and she is asking for the early retirement insurance incentive. She won't need it for a full year though. So since she's working two days into April, she'll have insurance through April, so she will only need it May through February, as her workday is in March. In talking with Becky, that would be a cost of $4,166.70. Obviously, for this fiscal year, that would only be two months, which is in my budget, and then I will work with Becky to make sure that I have that covered when I present my budget for the next fiscal year. Now, that I need action on. I do need a motion to approve the agreement, and I have an actual agreement that I need the board to sign on, and then I will have her sign it if it's effective. And that's just sets out the intent and the pay.
So I guess this is not common for me, but this is, this is a common practice as far as, and in line with our policies.
It was established quite a while ago, when basically for the Sheriff's Department, it was started there, and it's, it's expanded from there.
So it's been common procedure for us to do that.
Yeah. And again, normally, it maxes out three years, and she won't even be here for four years.
Make a motion to approve.
I have a motion and a second to approve the agreement for the early retirement insurance incentive for Rosie Schwager as presented. All those in favor say aye. I oppose, nay. Motion carried. I sure can. We can. Can we take a short recess at this time, Lisa?
Absolutely.
All right, good morning, everyone. We are back. We convene at this time, our Tuesday, September 1st, 2020, board meeting. And next on our agenda would be Mike Clausen, our Jackson County Assistant Engineer. Morning, Mike.
Hi, Mike. The first thing I have on the agenda is a resolution for the 82nd Avenue Bridge, reducing the weight limit to 10 tons. We talked to IAW, and they've been doing calculations on the damages on that bridge. That's our recommendation, is take the 10 ton.
For how long? You tell us.
Until it's repaired or replaced.
And we don't have any estimates or anything like that coming back at all here.
Not yet. They're, they're working on the, what's the procedure, and trying to get the quantities figured, or what needs to be done. I would expect to have that in the next two or three weeks.
And did I, did I read on here something about one lane too, or no? It's not gonna be one lane though, correct?
No.
So they just have to weigh themselves before they get on the bridge.
So if we meet, if I meet a truck on the other side coming toward me, somebody's gotta stop.
Are we putting up yield signs on the other side, or not? You just leave it open?
No, we put up, we posted 10 ton last week already. We put some red flags on the, on the signs to bring in everybody's attention as well.
So what's the school bus weigh?
I don't know. I have no idea how much. Plus, you know, how, you know how much it weighs when there's people on it.
How many people.
Yeah, yeah.
Goes across.
How many people.
It's probably still legal.
It's gonna be an issue this winter, because we can't cross it with a dump truck or.
Snow block, so.
Oh, and there's probably no chance that we're gonna have it repaired by then either, right?
Right, and it's not gonna be repaired this fall.
Well, we don't have much choice. I mean, it's damaged.
Yeah.
And that was out of our control, and.
We're asking the board to approve that resolution.
So I have a motion and a second to approve the resolution for 82nd Avenue Bridge embargo to 10 ton as presented. All those in favor say aye. I oppose, nay. Motion carried.
I think, just, okay, so I Google real quick, like, how much does a school bus weigh? You can expect an average school bus weighs about 24,387 pounds.
12 tons.
12 tons.
Empty.
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 So would you notify the school?
What school district?
McCollum.
Yeah, I guess that's not much different than us over at Mill, Mill Creek. We gotta go both ways.
They weigh that much?
That was the Google. So I don't know, do you want us to reach out to the school?
I mean, I think it's a good idea to inform them, you know, that, that is a situation over there. I mean, they're, it's our responsibility to, no doubt.
And maybe they can check the weight on their, the school bus that's actually running out there too. That might make a difference.
Yeah, they could run out there.
Well, and that's, and that's true, you know. I mean, there's, there's options there.
Okay, next, I have an entrance permit for Alan and Linda Flagle. It's a residential permit for 42nd Street, Fairfield Township, Section 20. It needs the side distance 500 feet each direction. We ask the board to approve that.
Much so moved.
Second.
I got a motion and a second to approve the Alan and Linda Flagle in Fairfield Township, Section 20, 42nd Street, for residential entrance permit. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I oppose, nay. Motion carried.
And that's all I have.
So have you looked at Ganzer's driveway?
I have. We're gonna put some more information together, but just to give you a quick distance on that, is there's about 625 feet from the east to the driveway, and from the other way, it's like 675 feet.
Really?
Yeah, 'cause last week Todd said that they were out there doing calculations and stuff, and they would get back to some, let us know, and then he would talk to Karen about what their findings were.
I did drive by, and I thought there was a fair amount of brush and ditch and stuff, that if we just push that back a little bit, it would help a lot.
Well, I think that's one of the things she said too. I know she was.
That's definitely a concern in a lot of different areas, is the foliage, of course, when you pull up to an intersection, and this time of year, it's, I don't know, them weeds can grow, grow a foot a day in, in dry weather, so I don't know. But, but it's, it's definitely an issue in some intersections, or even some blind spots.
And, you know, everything with the driveway, it's uphill to the roads.
I redid the one at the parking lot out on, on 223rd for Prairie Creek. I could see, they'd get up there, and there's enough brush on both sides, but they had to stop on the hill, and then it's gravel, and they're digging holes, and it was just a mess. And I had my skid loader, so I flattened that out, and I'm like, okay. And then I went and got my thing and trimmed back the vines and all this stuff, so you can actually see as you're coming up.
I know, I see some mowing being done. I don't know how, what to, what, how do you normally run your mowers, or is it on a basis of time, or do you have a certain time that you send your mowers out, or your mowers are all out whenever possible, or?
Right, right now, they're out, as much as they can. You know, if it rains and the blades are out, blading on the roads a little softer, with the roads being as hard and dry as they are, they've been using the mowers.
Yeah. Yeah, and I've had a few complaints about terrible washboards, and I said, well, they're so hard right now, you're just gonna have powder if you start trying to blade them out of there, so I just have.
Pretty hard to cut them.
Yeah, yeah. Do you know, is Todd coming in later, or is he not coming today?
He'll be here in the one session.
Okay.
So on somebody's really bad washboard wants, do we have a water truck? You can just ask, we don't have a mine tractor, okay.
Just have to pray for God to give us some rain.
We ain't the only ones asking for that.
Maybe yesterday we were gonna get our prayers answered, but it didn't last long.
That was someplace, not in this county, but some, somewhere in the, hit a road, and the washboards on that thing were just, I mean, almost send you off the road there or something.
Yeah, we've got areas that are just about that bad.
Thanks, Mike. See you later.
Thanks, Mike.
I do. Yep, I got it right here. So I'll put it in the, in the pile to be signed.
Thank you. So do we have any visitors or citizens from the public that would like to comment or questions at this time, online with us today? I see Kelly and Karen and Cam, Teresa, so that's all I see. Anybody got any questions? If not, we will carry on to Lisa.
Good morning.
Our county auditor.
This morning, I need a motion to approve the minutes of the August 25th, 2020 board proceedings, as written by Auditor Smith and authorized publication in the official newspapers.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second to approve the August 25th, 2020 board proceedings as written. All those in favor say aye. I oppose, nay. Motion carried.
Motion needed to approve and authorize the Auditor's Office to issue warrants in the publication of the claims listing in the amount of $223,227.15.
So moved. I believe 108,000 of that was secondary roads.
Was, yeah.
And then we also gave our first quarterly payment to the libraries.
Yeah, yeah, I did see that also.
Yep.
Yeah, there's a lot of first quarter.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Done to the historical society also, and, yeah. So, yes, I have a motion and a second to approve of the claims of $223,227.15. All those in favor say aye. I oppose, nay. Motion carried.
Discussion and possible motion today to approve the Jackson County Voting System security policy dated 9/1/2020. I am in the process of trying to, under my miscellaneous, under B is where I'm at.
Okay, I'm sorry, I missed.
I'm in the process, we have to do a cybersecurity survey to make sure that our system here in place in Jackson County is safe for cybersecurity. And this is one, and we also have to have an incident response plan. And so we are in the final stages of getting that all done. And so today, I would need a motion to update, basically what I'm doing is updating the Jackson County Voting System Security Policy. And what that does is it just says who is all authorized to do election projects, or, and do anything with elections, we have to tell them who's going to be doing it.
Is this a statewide policy? Is all the same? So everybody's playing the same platform, or no?
No, no, everybody's policy could be different, because some, some have cameras, some don't, some go to a locked room, some don't. I mean, so as far as our ballots go, they go into our locked fireproof safe, and in this policy here, it says that. Some ballots go into a locked room. It all depends. You know, we're able to handle the absentee ballots that we receive, we're able to do that and put it into our fireproof safe once we receive them back from the voters. Some counties are not like that.
So does Pete or somebody have to approve your security policy, huh?
No, no, it is, it is directed to the individual county. And then we have to also do an incident, an incident response plan, and we're working on that. And we did have to do contact solutions, because we may have to change our email addresses. There's a big question mark as far as if we will be able to use the .com email addresses, or if they will require us to switch over to a .go email address. That has a big question mark. We've contacted Solutions. Solutions is working with the state as far as what the requirements will be. This is statewide. It's, it's, I've been in a couple of meetings concerning this, and now everybody likes to change their email addresses, so.
That's understandable.
Yeah, it's, yeah, it's, it's a major undertaking.
So we're gonna have another mandate that's not paid for, right?
Well, some of it may be. At least, I was sitting in the meeting that day when Secretary Pete was talking about it, and there may be some money. I don't know how much money. But we also, once a week now, we have to have a vulnerability test on our system to see if we're vulnerable to outside cyber attacks, and just working to get a contract signed for that, paperwork to get that done. I mean, there's, there's a lot of work behind the scenes when it comes to voting and the security of our system and such. So today, I would ask to pass this Jackson County Voting System Security Policy.
Motion to approve.
Second.
A motion and a second to approve the Jackson County Voting System Security Policy as presented. All those in favor say aye. I oppose, nay. Motion carried.
One of the things that we had talked about earlier, so today I need a discussion and possible motion to approve a Jackson County purchasing slash credit card policy with employees not utilizing their own personal payment on behalf of Jackson County that exceeds $25. I emailed this to you last week. I thought that I did highlight, it must not have, the highlight must not have been.
I had it laying in front of my desk, highlighted a minute ago.
Today is, I did highlight just that, the only thing that's changing in this policy is the $25. Before, it was kind of an open thing. We talked about if I were at Walmart, as an example, and we take pens, you know, I can now use my personal credit card to buy those things and get reimbursed from the county. But there's no reason for me, if I have a county credit card and I go to a meeting in Des Moines, we really should be using our county credit card. And so we did put a dollar limit of $25. We thought that that was not an over excessive amount on a credit card. We thought that this was probably fair. And so today, I do ask if you believe that that's a good, a good dollar amount. We can change that, obviously, but, and seeing what happens.
That sounds pretty minimal, but again, I guess, if you do have a county credit card, why would you be using your personal credit card? I mean, we certainly don't want individuals to get perks, per se.
We can't speak to that. I will tell you that we've already been contacted by the State Auditor's Office. This is something that we will be telling them that this policy has been changed.
And I can see it, you know, I do it. If you get three or four in your pocket, and you pull the wrong one out, that happens. I mean, then we should be informed and say, hey, I did this, and, yeah.
So that's why we just, we made it.
I mean, if you feel that's a good number, I don't, I, I don't see any reason it should be more or less, I.
I don't have a problem with it, because I don't have a county credit card, so I don't have to worry about it.
But then, on that side of it, you can't charge it to your credit card either, and say, you're gonna have to pay it and get a receipt and bring it back to be reimbursed. That's, that's the policy, yeah.
That's what I, yeah.
Yeah. And that's fine, yeah.
I would move we approve the purchasing credit card policy.
It's second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the Jackson County purchasing slash credit card policy as presented, with the change of the $25 limit, do not exceed a $25 limit for a personal card. All those in favor say aye. I oppose, nay. Motion carried.
That's all that I have for the board today.
So the resolution we already passed, that was Mike's.
I just, what I do on the bottom there is to make sure that I get signatures from you. So yes, I do have a resolution here today for the 10-ton weight limit, so I will make sure that I get signed. Obviously, we've got the claims listing, and I will also, because we get a handwritten warrant last week for the Titan machinery, I have that paperwork also that I did want to sign. That was passed last week.
Going back to that resolution, you said you don't have a county credit card?
No, I've never had one.
Doesn't this say that you can't charge any more than $25 to your.
He's not charging it. He's paying for it and bringing in a receipt and getting paid.
So let's say.
I've never had one.
So let's say that Jack goes to a meeting.
So you're paying with a debit card instead of a credit card?
Cash. He just gets a receipt and brings it back. If it's legit, it gets paid back, right?
And sometimes, you know, maybe Jack has somebody make his reservation for him for a hotel or whatever. So, I mean, you could, if you ever have a credit card.
Yeah, Luanne's been making. When I go to the hotel, I use my personal credit card. I bring the receipt back and am reimbursed.
Okay. I was just questioning how that was worded, what's a 25, not to exceed 25?
I have a couple of questions.
Okay.
If I, if I may, you had talked earlier about possibly hiring an individual to work through the, through the election. Is that still something you're thinking about doing?
Yes.
Okay, I, I don't blame you. My second question is, we've been hearing a lot on the news about the absentee ballots going out with everything filled out, and then the not following said state.
Same trace states rules.
Right. And is that happening quite a bit across? I heard, I think it was, now there are ways where ruling in Johnson County, the Sioux City area. And is that happening quite a bit across, I heard, I think it was, now there ways where ruling in Johnson County, the Sioux City area. Woodbury County and all of that. Those that went out with all the personal information on them to people. Were those done by those counties or were they sent out by?
I can speak to all three of that. First off, let me go back to your first question. Your first question is, are we going to hire? Yes, I am, because I do anticipate a significant amount of absentee balloting for this November election. And I think because we're still continuing to do payroll and we still continue to do claims, you know, we still have to do our regular jobs and do all of this work. So when I looked as far as what it was going to cost, that I believe it's going to cost to hire someone part-time for probably six weeks. What I'm going to do is pull money out of my election official line item and I'm going to use, because of the high amount that I'm anticipating for absentee voting, I'm gonna, I think, use one last person in the precincts. So that's how I think I'm going to get it funded. I don't believe I'm gonna need a budget amendment. I did ask the Secretary of State's office if I could put this as part of the money that we're getting and they told me no. Because I did hire someone in the 2018 election, so therefore it's not considered in their eyes an extra burden. So we will not be able to get reimbursed for that, but I will be buying some equipment. I will be buying some more personal protective equipment and I'm going to be using that money for that. In regards to the absentee ballot request that you asked about. Lynn County, Johnson County, Woodbury County, they took it upon themselves to mail out their own absentee ballot requests. And what they did is they pre-populated the whole form, which means that they put in the voter's name, address, birthday, you know, the whatever numbers.
Personal information.
And then they mailed it out. Well, they were told not to do that. The reason why is that if I send it to your house, Larry, and all of a sudden you've moved to Arizona and your house has been sold and the new owner, but the mail gets delivered there. The problem is, is that that person could sign your name and mail it back to us. We would think it's you. So that's why there's such a controversy as far as a pre-populated form. Now, it is my understanding that the Secretary of State's office, it was supposed to have been done this week, I believe it'll be done next week. They will be mailing out over 14,000 absentee ballot requests to all of the active voters here in Jackson County, active and registered voters in Jackson County. So those forms are gonna hit us again. We're gonna get slammed with all of those requests. I would like to tell people though that we only need one request.
Well, that's, you know, that's sort of the same because they keep talking about the Democratic Party and the Republican Party are sending out to the voting faithfuls. So they could get three to four absentee ballot.
And the vote center is sent out.
Because AAA or AARP are sending them out. You know, people can get numerous.
Oh, four and five. And so we only need one. And so, but we keep track of all of that. Believe it or not, if you send us a piece of paper, we track that. Because if John J. Willie sends us four absentee ballot requests, we keep stapling them all together to say, well, Jack, you applied this day, this day, this day.
Staple them together and send them back to him.
And I just want you to know, and, and we don't send ballots out until October 5th. So between now and October 5th, you could send us five requests because you want to make sure that, that we got it and that's okay.
So some of the other counties have sent out the ballots already?
No, no, no.
No. Sent out.
October 5th is the right.
But the Secretary of State.
So what I've read is.
Pre-fill them out.
And they did that from what I read in the last couple of days here, they have since, the judge has since, they are not eligible.
There is an injunction with Lynn County, there is an injunction with Woodbury County, and I believe that Johnson County, their case will be heard, I believe, next week. I have read through the Woodbury and the Johnson County injunctions. Woodbury County's injunction is worded a lot better than the Johnson County injunction, but basically in the end it says the same thing. You should not, because we want to make sure that when we receive an absentee ballot request that we got that from the voter. And by having it pre-populated, you know, and having all that information there, we really, and so what the injunction says is that if I think it was Woodbury County, I don't want to get mixed up here. It's in the Woodbury or Lynn County, because that's the two I've read. They have over 30,000 absentee ballot requests already received and they can't use them. They are not allowed to.
That said on the news yesterday for Woodbury County. That the judge had ruled that they had, they could not accept them.
Correct.
And so all of those people that have already sent the requests in are gonna have to use the county forms that they get and send them back in.
Correct. That's correct.
And they personally fill out.
This morning.
And that's why I, I brought this up today because I think it's gonna be on TV on local access that, you know, if you get them, only send back one.
And, and you know, we have already have people that have already mailed back two or three and you know what? It's okay. It's okay. You know what? I mean, we want to make sure that people.
Just make sure jobs busier.
Yeah, it does. It's really confusing though. When you get them in the mail, they look legit and my wife says, are we supposed to fill this out? I said, no.
Honestly, Mike, you could have.
Yeah.
Just don't mail us the other ones that you received. But if you do, if you want to make sure, it's okay, you know? We just want to make sure that people vote. I think that's the main thing. The other controversy that has happened and, you know, honestly, I worked late last night at home. I didn't get a chance, but it sounds like there may have been a change in, in decision as far as a drop box. Several counties, drop boxes has been a big issue. I was on a webinar, not last week, the week before, for three days and that was the hot topic is drop boxes.
But on the news, I heard they were gonna not allow them.
But I think now there may have been a change. It doesn't, you know what? It doesn't matter to me. We are not going to be doing a drop box. We're going to eliminate, we, I had looked into it. It was going to be a relatively easy expenditure. Again, I was going to use federal money to do it. Because we really want to make sure that people do return absentee ballots back to us so they are counted. And instead.
But they all come self-stamped so that they don't.
Absolutely. But there are some people that don't believe in the post office and that's okay. Every, this is all about comfort. Where is your comfort and your trust at? And that's really what this comes down to. What are you comfortable and what are you trusting? So that's okay. We're going to also be offering what I'm gonna say, you can curbside vote, but we're also gonna do curbside pickup. You know, we're not gonna hand you a hamburger, but we'd like you to hand us your absentee ballot. So if you pull up to the east side of the courthouse and you don't want to get out, just give us a call, we'll come out. We will pick up those absentee ballots from you, from your car instead of you coming in. I think for the safety and security, I think that makes kind of sense to us. I really, I was kind of thinking about doing the drop box because it is out there. It would be camouflaged so we could always see what's going on. But I think to take away any shadow of a doubt, I think it's just best that from 8:30 to 4:30, you call us, we will come pick up the ballot in your car if that's what you so desire. I have been in contact with Bob Winiger, the Macau Postmaster. We've talked about several things. I think this is just another Christmas. That's the way that I look at it. I think the post office can handle this.
Actually, it's less mail-in Christmas, but it was out there too. It's like, I don't know. I mean, it's a small amount compared to Christmas time.
Right.
With all the cards and stuff.
Oh, we're talking millions of new Christmas cards that are going to be going out. And you know what? I talked to a carrier and I said, do you know what that is? And she said, well, that's an absentee ballot. I said, that's right. See, the carriers are very well aware of what they're carrying also. It's, there's no secret what we're doing here. I mean, we have a whole bunch of envelopes that we mail out and a whole bunch of envelopes that come back. So there's no secret. They know that, that what's in those envelopes. So it's not like, I don't think that we're gonna hear in, in December that somebody put a whole box of ballots in their car. We just don't see that here. I'm sorry. We just don't. I don't believe they're fraud. You know, and all of those ballots, if you do choose to mail it back to us, they're intelligent barcoded. We know when that ballot gets put in the system, myself and Mary, we've been dropping ballots, these envelopes in ballot boxes across Iowa. I did it in Des Moines. We've done it in Delmar. We did it in Marion. We've kind of been going all over and we've been dropping these envelopes. How long did it take to get from Des Moines to Macau? I dropped my ballot at 5:30 on a Thursday afternoon in the Walmart parking lot and we got it here on Tuesday morning. I think that's pretty good because it probably didn't get picked up Thursday night. It was 5:30. It probably got picked up on Friday and it was here on Tuesday.
Well, I think it's pretty safe to say that we're in a different situation than larger communities or louder, larger districts and voters. So, I mean, it's safe to say that we are safe and secure much more than, than a larger community. But, yeah, I think if anybody has any questions, again, Lisa's always been available.
I take calls on the weekend.
Yeah, she more than.
I guess I thought it was, after hearing it on, on, on TV and on the news, I just thought it was an important subject for us to discuss today. Because we want people to vote. We're still gonna have our, our precincts polling places if people choose not to use an absentee ballot. But I just thought it was important for you to explain a little bit about the balloting to the public.
People need to understand that Iowa has a very good system. We have a lot of laws in place to make sure that ballots are counted. And the cybersecurity part of that and the testing that is necessary for everything. I mean, there are just so many steps where we have to show and prove and fill out forms even after the election day. When the polls are closed, we even have to do what they call a post-election audit. And so we bring in people to do that. We don't do that. We're present in the room, but we do not do that. So there are steps, even after the vote is done, we still have steps that are, need to be done to, to prove that.
Double check.
Absolutely, that what we did is, is correct.
Thanks, Lisa.
Thank you. I mean, the support of the board is always important and, and we know that and we appreciate that. And we're gonna get through this and all of the votes that come into our office, if that ballot comes back, we do everything possible to make sure that it gets counted. The only reason that it would not get counted is if you didn't sign the envelope. And we spend quite a bit of time tracking down those, those signatures and calling people to make sure that, yes, you, the ballot inside the envelope, it's there. We just can't open it yet until you sign the, the envelope.
Appreciate the information. Again, if anybody has any questions, feel free to call Lisa. She's, I've called her a lot of times. Morning or evening. She's usually up quite early, I found out, and she usually goes to bed quite late.
Yeah, I'm not a sleeper, so.
It's open, good open communication, I will say that. Appreciate it, Lisa.
Yep, thank you.
Luanne, are you available? Maybe you want to give Ben a call before you come up? I see he's next on the agenda anyway.
Down the walk in the yard.
What are you doing?
He can wait. Good morning, Luanne. We haven't done that yet, I think we have.
All right, calendar for this week. We do have, it's not on your calendars, but there is a work session at 10:30 this morning on the Jackson County Welcome Center. Tomorrow, September 2nd, at 6:00 PM is E911 Service Work Meeting for Mike. On Friday, I have nothing for Thursday, the third. On Friday, September 4th, at 10:00 AM is a Workforce Iowa Office Hours meeting for Jack. And at noon is a Workforce CEO Office Hours meeting for Jack. Monday, September 7th, the courthouse will be closed in celebration of the Labor Day holiday. Will reopen on Tuesday, September 8th, and that will be our next regular meeting at nine o'clock that morning. That afternoon at four o'clock is a Macau River Watership Management Authority Executive Committee meeting for Larry and that's to be announced. I don't know how they're gonna do that yet.
The water sample thing.
I think that's beyond the.
That's on the. Good morning, the eighth, I think. No. Fifteenth, you're right.
I'm getting, I'm marking on the calendar, I got the date right, so. And that's all I actually have for you this morning.
Thank you.
That was easy, no? Thank you, Luanne. And our next committal is Ben. Everybody else raise their hand though. We're waiting for Ben. We'll take a short recess at this time. Okay, we will reconvene at this time. And with us today, joining us is Ben Coburn, our Jackson County Zoning Administrator.
Good morning.
Morning, Ben.
Okay, so I had given a report to the Board of Supervision to this board about our Board of Adjustment actions. That would have been on Monday, August 24th. I haven't had any new information come in as far as, you know, potentially remanding that back to the Board of Adjustment for them to, you know, reconsider. I went back and listened to some of the minutes because the, the applicant requested a zero foot setback. It would have been zero feet from the eaves of the roof overhang, two feet from the sidewall. Concern from some of our board members was with handling, you know, the volume of, you know, water runoff, the slope of the land they have to, you know, kind of dig out and probably build a retaining wall, not like a, you know, a huge, you know, huge one, but you know, farther back you get to keep that level. You know, talking about, you know, excavating more and more. So with a two-foot setback, you don't have two feet of space between the right, the retaining wall and the sidewall. And.
Which we're talking setback from the eve also, right? We're not talking setback from the structure itself. So if you've got a two-foot eve on there, you're, you're still, you may not, maybe it could be a foot, I suppose, but yeah.
You've got, yeah, you've got some room, you know, that, but that, I guess that retaining wall would, yeah, be right up on the property line. So I think as a, you know, an effort in compromise, the motion made was to have a three-foot setback, three feet from the eaves and five feet from the sidewall. So that's, you know, the, I think the spirit of the motion that was approved to approve that application. The, you know, the applicant had, had asked me to like really listen to that and see like if a three-foot setback meant if he didn't put an eaves at all, you know, he could be, just scoot his sidewall setback.
Till three foot.
More foot, but that's not how the, the, that's not how it was worded. I listened, I went back and listened. So, you know, I'm, you know, letting them know about that, but just for your information, there's, I don't see anything, nothing's come to light as far as any new comments or opposition from anybody.
I would say we approved a three-foot setback from any projection from that building, so wherever the.
If he decides not to put an eve on it, then he can put the building three foot from the line.
Okay. And that's, I mean, technically the setback they were okay with was three feet, so, you know, okay, that's fine. And so I guess I don't need any motions or anything. You just kind of let it sit.
Unless there's something else comes up.
It'd basically be the one September 14th rolls around, that's 21 days after they approved it, so we take effect at that point. Okay, on that topic of Board of Adjustment, we have a meeting on September 14th. So we should have a quorum for that. I think at least four members got back to me on attending that meeting. Application from Lauren Vanowitz, so the Vanowitz Board covering business up there wants to put in a warehouse and storage structure to help with his, you know, some, I guess, overflow or. Yeah, exactly. And then also have maybe some. Yeah, some, some units for rents as well, similar to what I think K. Tax Meyer put up some buildings recently after rezoning. And then I think Jeff Frank there on the corner of 308 and Highway 50Q also has some storage structures. I think in, it would have been probably eight or nine years ago. We amended our C1 highway commercial portion of the ordinance to allow for rental storage units in the commercials on the district. So this would just, this would be for a variance to build closer to property lines. So if you kind of imagine that, you've got a cornfield in the back, kind of comes downhill a little bit. And then this building would be about 12 feet, seven inches off the property line, the north, and five feet from the west property line, which is where we need the variance. The rear setback is a special exception, so these lots were rezoned back in 2000. These lots were rezoned back in two thousand and three from A one to C one. I think that's probably when we established the the business, so.
What is the side seven foot?
Uh, the side setback to the C one zone is actually twenty feet. In in the C one highway commercial zoning district, it's twenty feet, so we're looking at a modification of seventy-five percent. Anything fifty percent or greater is what we require a variance for, so.
So the proposed building is going west of his current structure?
Running east, yeah, so it's just west of his existing structure, probably about seventy feet between them. And it's gonna be, um, one part's gonna, I think it's gonna be a hundred and eighty feet long, so. The shape of that lot is kind of, I guess, if you imagine the state of Nevada that it kind of has a piece of my shape and then goes back in a rectangle, so there is enough room to fit that. It's a pretty sizable structure, though, but.
Yeah, it is.
Yeah.
And the property to the s- west is commercial.
Yeah, yeah, that's us.
Is that Keith yet?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, okay.
So and there is a.
So he'll be notified of that though, too, correct? Neighbors should get notified, yeah.
The the he and then the neighbors to the back.
Nichols.
Yeah, that sounds great. Um, they would be notified as adjacent property owners, um, so. Um, as far as that goes, there is a drainage ditch running between the lots along there, so, you know, potentially. You know, we've got a much larger structure than the variance they modified and approved last week. So, you know, potentially, um, the the similar concerns, not as severe a setback modification, but a much larger structure, so.
Okay, so with that being said, Ben, with a structure that size, I mean, we have a lot of rough square footage. And it's not on the ground, so what, who calculates your runoff? And if that drainage age accompanies that runoff, extra runoff, so on and forth, do we have somebody that?
I can probably, you know, do that research and submit it as part of my report.
I mean, that's, that would be a concern of mine. I don't, I can't visually see what that, what that.
That would be a lot of water.
It would be, right?
Yeah, and.
Yeah, unless you could divert it two different ways, but I still think it's going to the same spot. They're still going to the west at some point.
Yeah, and that, yeah, you're exactly right, so, um, you know, I'll I'll provide those, I guess.
As long as you're not diverting it in a different direction on somebody else's property.
Right.
I think it's all going, it's all gonna go to the same place, now however, however much water fell on that area, but when you have this instead of glass, yeah.
Um, yep, so that's, uh, that's what we'll be meeting out, meeting out, so any new applications, we'd move back to October if they come in, you know.
Okay.
So, um, as far as that goes, uh, let's see, um. Uh, I am. I am all set to move forward with civil infraction against a carried alarm. So basically, the violations, um, will assess a one thousand dollar fine because it's a repeated violation and then that's per Article two, section eight of the nuisance ordinance.
Thousand dollars per?
Oh, you know, we, I mean, that.
Week, day, what?
We do per day that it's existed, yeah, um, if I can change it here, but.
What is it normally set up as?
That is the, that's what you can do, so if it's the first violation at seven fifty and each day that it exists, you can, you can assess that fine. So I can, you know, modify that to, uh, you know, request that, but the second art or Article two, section seven, a payment by county, um, the nuisance was not abated by the deadline we set. So we granted defendant numerous opportunities to evade the junk and nuisance conditions on the property. And we now have the right to evade that, uh, and then cost will be assessed to the property for collection in the same manner as the property tax. So, um, if we get to that point.
I, just a bit of information, I did come by there yesterday evening, it was dark yet, but he was out in the yard with a gun to his shoulder.
So I think, um.
It's probably not gonna happen real fast, but if, I don't know if he's working at it or not.
Well, yeah, and I'll reach out to him and just say, you know, this is coming, I, you know. Either get cracked in, probably have enough, you know.
Always had it probably at least about ten years to do it.
Well, this, the, you know, the 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 violation originally for not planting those trees, that's, um, you know, things that started. That was early, yeah, originally approved by our Board of Bill by ninety-three, but looking through, you know, like twenty fifteen. Saw that, said, oh, that's there. Um, so I guess, um, you know, we need to talk about how we get into having somebody do that, what process, like as far as we get bids or or fees or whatever to do that and.
We'd have to have bids.
Yeah, so.
We're kind of going through that with that half queue property. There's a bunch of stuff left on that. Not like that, but there's some.
Um, but then otherwise, before recess, we were talking about getting those other two flats recorded, so, um, I'll, you know, hopefully.
But they're the same two we talked about last week?
He, uh, yeah, so that would be Stockman and Muddy Rivers, so, um, you know, we'll just, I guess.
What's the holdup?
Uh, so I mentioned the, you know, the property taxes, if it's certif, if it's free of certified taxes, that means it's free from, you know, what's due this year, like if it's not delinquent, can we, you know, can we have the treasurer sign off?
All that information's here in the courthouse.
Yes, I already talked to, I went and got some signatures from Beth, and, you know, that was her question was, um, you know, what this, is what does that mean to be free of certified taxes and, you know? So, we don't wanna snafu where there's a, you know, gap in, you know, a few thousand dollars of property taxes that don't get paid because this lot gets sold, so.
Okay, so clear them up and get them done.
Okay.
Uh, we also approved last week, I believe, two mother ones, Kepman and Stinas.
Those, Kevin's recorded, Schneider Industrial Park is recorded, so.
Snyder's, yes, Snyder.
And then I, I believe I introduced Putnam, Putnam and Lee Place as well, so I'll get that on the agenda for resolution.
Yes. Okay.
That's all I have.
Okay, I have one question. So as we all know, my husband and I, we go out laughing, and as we're out in the country and we're seeing dirt piles and there's an assumption on my part that someone's building a house. Does everybody in the county have to get a building permit?
Um, so if it's, uh, if it's not a farm structure and the property is not on a farm operate, like a legitimate farm operation, they should have a building permit or or zoning permit. I would say, you know, I I wouldn't want someone coming in for like a doghouse or a basketball hoop or a flagpole, but.
So if someone's building a house on some land.
On an acreage of some sort.
Let's just say it's on ten acres, yeah. Does that person need a building permit?
Typically, yes, they, I would say.
So what happens if they don't? What's the penalty if they don't?
I'd send them a a letter, you know, and then copy the application they need to fill out, say, please fill this out. Um, get us a permit for, contact your health department so they can get a permit for a subject system in a well. And I would check with health department to see if they've got that, if I've gotten a report of some.
So why don't we require a a building permit for some of them has a agricultural, uh, some, there's a farm out there. How come we don't require a building permit for that?
Um, Iowa Code, chapter three thirty-five.
So the code says they don't have.
Iowa Code, it's farms are exempt from zoning. It's generally up to counties to interpret that. You know, so typically forty acres in active production is the easiest thing to see and say, that's a farm, you know. But then you have situations where, you know, a farmer is eighty years old and just rents their ground out to a neighbor. They're not really engaging in farm activity, um, they're generating income from farm activity, but they're not themselves, you know, out harvesting or, you know, like, you know, that's. I guess that's a problem with the farm exemption.
So we have a lot, we have a few rural subdivisions, you know, housing subdivisions. If someone puts an addition on, do they need a building permit?
Yeah, they would need an accessory, uh, accessory structure or addition zoning permit application.
And if they don't get a permit for that, what's the, what's the penalty?
Um, I reach out and I tell them, I mean, eventual penalty if they didn't get a a permit, like if they said, no, I'm not getting one after I contacted them, then it would be a civil infraction, so. I guess the maximum for the first offense is seven fifty, and then for each day it's hasn't been rectified, additional amount, repeat violations would be.
So I'm gonna go back to that, so let's say somebody is building a residence or put an addition on and they did not get a permit and you go through that, potentially if they don't meet the setbacks, it could be required to be taken now.
So.
Correct?
That's one potential penalty if they could appeal to the Board of Adjustment for a variance or a special exception to modify that settlement, but if the Board of Adjustment also said, no, we're not issuing that. Because you haven't demonstrated justification, then yeah, technically they might have to evade that.
And does this building permit need to be posted in view, clear view?
Um, the zoning permit should be posted, uh, we issue, we give them an orange sheet, it's laminated to withstand some of the elements, but sometimes they fade, um, so it might be difficult to see. But they would either post that on a utility pole, a stake, uh, put in the window of a vehicle as you're driving by, it needs to be displayed, um, so.
So you should be able to see it from the road?
Yes.
I I guess, you know, I I I, when I lived in town, you know, you seen a lot of times if there was a garage going up, you see them in a front window with a porch. You know, but I guess with that being said, a structure in the, in the rural area, you might have a pile of dirt twenty feet high. That's in front of the new, new home yet that hasn't been landscaped, but it's potentially in view, but you may not physically see it from driving by, I I don't know.
The county doesn't have the ability, just so I wanna make sure I'm clear, so we do have Iowa Code that says that if it's a farm structure, you know, they do not need a building permit. The county doesn't have the ability to make them to do a resolution and ordinance or anything that that says that a farm structure meets to have a building permit.
Okay, um, so, yeah, Iowa Code, it prevents counties from regulating farm activity and that includes farm houses, so, um, and then any farm, grain bin or barn, uh, confinement, uh, you know.
So the confinement's all under the
they.
Matrix and.
Exactly.
Kind of sort of.
We have a process of reviewing that, and it's, as you know, it's a paper tiger.
Well, why, why can't we get permits, or not a permit, but at least a request to build? So we can make that decision whether it's acceptable or in the right place or whatever. I mean, to me, I should go out and buy a forty-one acre arm and I can put up a half a million dollar house and not pay any taxes on it.
I I don't know the particular about the the taxes.
It would take some time, it would take some time for the assessor's office to know that you built a half a million dollar house. If you put it way back in the field and you gate it.
Well, that was a case that the assessors told us at the, um, at our conference meetings is that a lot of buildings and stuff they discovered from the over the shots that they were doing, they found buildings that they didn't know existed because of the the airplane flying over.
Topometry and the.
Right.
The thirty thousand square foot milking facility in Scott County, one of the supervisors built in two thousand and eleven. And they just found out about it.
I think it's good discussion. I mean, because we do, we see housing building all the time and.
I mean, I would think at least a courtesy thing, say, we are going, um, because somebody might not know that you can't put it right next to where we're gonna build a highway in two years and then expect to get paid for it because it's in the right of way.
Sure.
And I think even Buck has said, when he goes out to do his upraisals and he gets there, here's a, here's a shed or here's something that he didn't know was there.
Agricultural, see, that's the, to me, that's the the hinging point, isn't it? It's agricultural.
And they still have to pay taxes on that.
They'll have to pay tax on it, but it might take some time.
I know, that's, that's.
Right, so there's no.
So they do pay some tax on it.
Oh, absolutely. Oh, yeah, oh, absolutely, yeah.
But you don't pay the taxes if nobody knows it's.
Yeah, this doesn't make any sense, no.
That's the question.
I mean, you know, it's, yeah, I, you know, I think it's I think it's bad, the farm exemption is well-meaning, but, you know, as far as the goals it's trying to accomplish.
It's basically that we talked about the last week or so, lack of communication here.
Yeah.
You know, like.
A lot, we're trying to work.
You know, I mean, we wanna work with everybody involved and I think it's, I really think this is on a a bigger level. I think it's up here to our our senators and our representatives to say, hey, take a look at this, is this really what we intended?
It was kind of funny because I, we were out one night and I, I don't know, something was said, then somebody came in, they had a real estate question that I dealt with them. And I looked at the Beacon website and they had a house on the Beacon website that was back from the nineteen hundreds. And I'm like, wait a minute, this house is not that house. So I said something to the assessor's office, they went out and they looked at it, and the house had been built several years earlier. Now, that's no fault to the assessor's office, that's not, but, you know, that house had been up, they lived in it. And so that's, that's why I just asked, I'm just curious, you know, I'm not, I'm not out policing, I'm not, I'm not trying to do any, I'm just curious.
And the other thing is they had the state legislature, um, earlier this year, they passed, um, two two bills, two changes to Iowa Code. Um, we used to be able to have them fill out a form, a request for egg exemption, so we could make that determination and say, okay, you've got forty acres in, uh, you know, or you got two hundred acres in, uh, production or pasture or even actively managed timber could qualify as a farm, farm exemption. But now we can't even do that. So now it's kind of on the landowner to come in and say, I wanna put up a house. And I would have to tell them, you need to get a permit for that, say, well, I'm a farm, like, well, we can't require you to fill this form out to determine that. You just, you can challenge my decision to the Board of Adjustment, so basically say, I say, I'm requiring you to fill out this permit because you wanna put up a house. You say you don't want to, you can go to the Board of Adjustment and they can make the determination whether you're exempt or not.
I still have to require, but the setbacks, they still have to, well.
Not from zoning, they'd have to build outside the right of way. That's the one, the farm exemption does not apply to the road right of way. So, but they can, yeah, they can theoretically.
Well, we had one somewhere on the northern part of the county where they wanted to put the shed, right? I mean, actually, in the right of way. And they said, well, they're never gonna build a road there anyway, and as you can look at the picture, you can see the highway coming from Dubuque County and stopping and going to a gravel road, so some point in time.
Possible.
Yeah, it's real possible, and then you'd have to move that building.
Or the, or the county has to, you know, have to take it, you know, compensate.
And why should we compensate them for making a mistake where they're not supposed to be there anyway?
Absolutely.
I think they should be fined.
I had good discussion and probably we need to talk about it again and and maybe had a.
Legislators in form.
Different, yeah.
Yeah, I registered our opposition or my opposition to those bill changes. It also tried to carve out some distinction for agricultural experiences that would occur on on. So you have somebody doing like a pumpkin patch or a corn maze. And then you have, are those agricultural experiences, even though they're.
I know somebody's also growing hops on a smaller acreage, that's farming.
Yeah.
I mean, and I, I know it's not forty acres, so are they, do they not get the exemption because they're not big enough?
Um, the, I would say the growing of hops is fine, but any structure associated, like if you put up a farm or brewery, that's commercial activity, that would not be agriculture, you know, it's just the act, the cultivation. But.
Farm to dry it or store it or, that would be considered farming.
I would.
I'm just trying to get a feel where it's going.
Yeah, I mean, it's a, it's a big challenge.
And a pumpkin patch, I mean, you know, if you had five acres, you could.
Sure.
Hell of a, hell of a problem.
You know, you have a pumpkin patch, hundred people, hundred vehicles show up, you know, that parking, like, that traffic. You know, any structures there, like, um, you know, would it possibly be exempt where if they wanna have concerts or use live music, or they wanna serve food, have a restaurant, do a fire for, you know, brick oven pizzas made with crocks, you know, oh, they grow their own tomatoes or they, you know, mill their own grain for the crust, that's.
Conversation to be had.
Thanks, Ben.
Appreciate it, Ben.
Get the pumpkin bars ready.
Get them, other subdivisions.
Oh, Lacy's got a mill set up at the mill, so.
Recorded.
Make some crust.
Cookies over there too, if you all want.
Cookies are good. Sure.
It's Larry's birthday today.
Happy birthday.
Yeah, 19.
21.
And we are back, we are back in a work session with, uh, Todd Keeney, interim county engineer and Mike Clausen, our assistant engineer. Good morning, gentlemen. What fine piece of information do you have for us today?
Probably the same stuff they gave us before.
Yes. Yes, everybody's looking at something similar to this.
The second page.
Second page.
Yeah, I got this on the first page.
Yours is a little smaller, so I can read. So basically with that board head.
I'm sorry, just so the public knows, if anybody's listening, we're, we're discussing our work session is discussing, uh, maintenance, maintenance projects, possible maintenance projects. Right? Construction maintenance, yeah.
So for the bridges, uh, based on what the board had directed, uh, like I had to do. And I generate this list, well, I think maybe it was already pre-existing, but kind of tweaked a little bit. Added some other factors, criteria to consider, sufficiency rating, uh, the posted weight limits, ADT, which is the daily traffic, and then the year constructed and the bridge size. So based on, uh, that information, Mike and Ed talked and you know, depending on much extra carryover funds you want to spend, we're just going to recommend one bridge, we kind of would recommend that we do the FA 3501. That would be the first priority. Second priority would be the Iowa 2053. And then the third priority would be the Bell 2088.
Uh, Bell 2088 is what number?
Four.
Oh, that's number four.
Number three would be the first, first one, four would be the third one and six would be the second.
Right.
Are these?
You said six would be the second.
Six would be the second, yeah.
The, the 20 bridges that are listed here, uh, I W put a, a list together of bridges they felt we should replace in the next five years. And that's what this, that's what these bridges came.
I know I had some real interest in that when I first called you, when I seen this list. Because the number one bridge is on the road that we closed last year and we agreed that we were going to do no maintenance on that bridge or we can just cross that one off completely, right?
Right, yeah, the top two are level C and I would be, that's why I separated those out. Probably do those, but they're on the list of five, the next five years, so it's hangout. So you can see that there's also a couple of bridges down below, the river bridges, uh, were also on this list to do in the next five years. I mean, those aren't day labor type bridges, so.
Okay, could you repeat what the third choice was?
Number four.
Number four, the Bellevue 2088.
Okay, what was your first choice?
The FA 3501.
Number three.
Oh, okay.
And I did see in, uh, claims a bunch of plank and, and wood products that were bought, they were for bridges that were already doing or added.
Those are the ones for this fall where I guess we're switching to a concrete deck on the one bridge.
I think I see it too.
I think, yeah.
But the plank, you have an inventory you'll use periodically for maintenance as well. So it's not like you're, you're going to have a use for the product.
Right, and the only ones, even these, the concrete deck bridges are still going to have wooden back walls and winged planks. So we need the, the plank that we
Sure.
We need those anyway. The only ones that are going to take a little while to use up would be the deck bank, which are 26 foot.
Okay.
So those are the three bridges to choose from, I guess. The third, third page of bridges is just a list of the additional bridges that are added at the time, just kind of.
And, and again, you know, as you mentioned, these three that you recommend here, I guess I'd still physically like to take a look and see. Just, I mean, I'm certainly going to take your recommendation and say that, yeah, you were absolutely correct. Because even as you go down some of these, I looked on the maps and some of these, even just the, the additional posted bridges, some of them are done dead ends and they're never going to be over 20. So you're not looking for any action on any of them bridges there today? You're just informing us that's what you're recommending and we can take a look at it at our.
Are there any of those that could be swapped out for a box cover?
I mean, that's some when you, we go through the design process, just because it's listed as a bridge doesn't mean we would replace it necessarily as a bridge. But those, priority wise, that's the, what, what those should be replaced. Whether they're a, you know, a precast box cord or, or ported place box or a bridge, it just, that's to be determined. Very well could.
Yeah, it just needs to be fixed.
Yeah.
If you have a 44 foot bridge, so it's probably not going to be a box cord.
You're right.
Yeah.
Those are bridges that Alex could design?
Yeah.
For sure.
Yeah.
Yeah, we don't need a full set of plans for these.
Okay.
The wood deck ones, we've always been doing those in-house or anything. The long concrete deck, it's still there.
Okay.
If you want to go back to the first page, I guess.
Certainly.
The sufficiency rating, what's good and what's bad?
100 is perfect, 0 is bad, so the higher number the better. Lower number.
Traffic count.
No.
Sufficiency rating.
I just was curious, yeah.
Zero would be in the creek.
Well, I asked that when I called you that.
You have 27 points, eh?
To qualify for bridge funding, it'd be up to 160.
That's lower than that. But you can always get various. Farms are self-employed by county junior too. But it's not really necessarily a federal requirement, it's something that we, the counties do for their bridge replacement program.
But these are wood deck bridges, we're not going to use, uh, bridge money on them, but local.
In those states, it's like, they're all going to be what you can easily do with the, they're, they're steel IBS.
And am I correctly saying, when we were talking about the excess, so were we talking somewhere around the 800,000 figure? Is that what we were talking?
I, I think it's going to be in that ballpark, but we, I want to wait till the standard report gets done.
Sure.
And then I think then what we want to do is come back and show where you're tracking with your expense and revenue and the.
Going forward.
Just, yeah, the stagnation or the growth of your carryover balance. So if you can see that ticking up each year, that's the thing you want to, you know, either one year or two years in a row where you purposely overspend 600 to 700 to whatever thousand dollars so you can spend that down. And you just need to get comfortable with what your carryover balance should be.
Well, we certainly have to keep in mind the South Main, that's not on our five year plan. So we certainly have to keep that in the back door.
Well, that should be coming out of your, uh, farm market or bridge replacement program. So this would not, carryover balance is your, I call it your old money.
Okay.
Road fund money, that money is held at the state. So that money, that, that bridge project should be paid out of what we would call state funds.
Okay.
The only thing that might come, we, we need more right of way out there.
Yeah, okay, well, that's.
We'll just let the city give it to us.
Well, I'm also, the other side is the citizens.
All right. Are we going to repair projects? Is that what you said the first page?
Yeah, the first page. I would, yes, I would recommend that Y 61 is the top priority one. I think everybody's probably been on that.
On and off and on and off and.
Building 72 and.
My correct.
It's been patched before, but, and our guys have patched on it. Contracted patching on it before, needs to begin.
And even, even if we do an overlay, there are need, need.
Needs to be patched, you know.
So if we did that ahead of time, someone would save a lot of money when we go home to do the overlay.
Yeah.
And your typical rehab is to patch and then overlay. So it's not like this patching work would be wasted if you did a crack and seed or removal or something. So this patching work is improving infrastructure that you're just going to pay, you know, overlays. So you're not throwing the money away.
So it's paying in two parts instead of one, one bigger.
Well, is there any value to patching and overlaying at the same time?
No, this is just patching here, but it could be down the road. We could say, well, we can overlay from Cottonville one way or the other to say, you know, if we can work against them.
It's a long enough project, we would have to split it to overlay.
I, I guess my own feeling is, once we get to patching in place, at least we have an improvement to where we have, you know. That has to be done anyway.
Right, we, we may want to look at adding this for an overlay in the five year road plan.
Yeah.
And maybe add to something that's already out there, possibly.
I would, I would tend to agree. And I don't, I'd have to review the five years to physically go look again, I guess, to say what's, what's more important. Uh, so if we decided that, yeah, this is our number one priority, what kind of timeframe are we looking?
Put together, sent out a request for quote this winter sometime. I think you said you had the patch quantities kind of figured out, right?
So.
They're all marked, yeah.
You could, you probably, you wouldn't get it done this fall, but you definitely could. Depending on how you want to schedule it, you could tell them you got to have it done by, you know, July 1st. They could come in and patch it early.
We definitely would not have it done by this fall.
No.
Because, you know, with the harvest coming up, we've got to consider, I know it's heavily used.
Every company's busy.
Yeah.
Oh, sure.
By now.
I think you'd want to let it in the next 30 days or get a quote in and just get somebody under contract and turn it loose the first thing in the spring.
Certainly what I do.
That, that's, I'm per, I'm good with that.
The other thing I would recommend is, so in case you get good pricing that you might want to pick, like I was talking to Mike about doing, get a price to seal coat 17th Avenue, Green Island. Because those are projects you could add pretty easily and get a little more impact around the county. Because if you get good pricing, you could do those projects as well.
You got a really good fall or something, like snag some.
Yeah, I would, I would, I would agree with you, Todd.
Yeah, and it's good to have a number to go with it.
Yeah, you don't have, you don't have to hire them, you just get a quote in for, we do that where we just show them the projects, give us a score yard cost for a double chip seal and you get the money, you don't really turn anybody loose, but you have the quote there already.
Okay, I agree with, uh, all the above. I guess the only thing I would have to, or I'd like to, I guess, is go look at the bridge projects at some point, but I don't. If, if you guys are advising that, I'm willing to go along with that, I guess, that's.
As far as the ball rolling, I guess.
Yeah.
I think that's a good step forward. So we want to do.
You wanted to do all three bridge projects, you're saying?
No.
No.
No, they're recommended.
Cause I was like, that's 100,000.
No, they're, they're top three, they're, they're recommending the top three and we need to pick.
I just added that up and I'm like, well, there's 400 and some 500.
Well, so, you know, I mean, I'm taking in just showing numbers out here, 120 and 450 is 570. So do we have room for another one on there? Do we have room for another 120? Do we have room for the 152, the number two proposal? Or the number three proposal?
It doesn't hurt, so we'll have to do a resolution to add these projects to your five year program.
Right, yeah.
So it doesn't hurt to do a resolution, resolution to add two projects. You can always not do the second priority project. So yeah, you're more of, it doesn't hurt anything to add both.
I'd like to see that. I would too.
These are maintenance projects that you get on fire.
I forgot, I guess. No, these are maintenance projects.
Where'd we do our five year? Okay, well, either way, we still should proceed with, we still should proceed with, uh, bidding or anyway, right? I mean, I, I'd like to see, and if I'm, if I'm correct. Is that bridge on 216th, is that the one that's, Mike, can you tell me, is that up by closer to? I know there's two in that I can visually see, one that's on a bend right there by the cave, cave kind of comfort. And one that's up closer to the east by, uh, where it's really undermining into the road there.
Somewhere in that corner, right?
Yeah.
Is there two right in that location?
I don't think so.
There's, there's.
Two miles off of the Bellevue.
Yeah, that's, that's the one where it's undermining into the creek is actually under, I think we're going to have to put some rip. We talked about it last year where it's undermining into the fence line and.
Yeah.
Now, which one is that?
That is number. Number three.
Okay, that's, and that is your first choice?
No, that's a recommendation.
Okay, that's 216th Street?
Right. I mean, that's a lower number if we still have that amount available to us, per se. I know it's, it's not a real big grid, I know it's pretty, pretty narrow there, that's.
Yes, if we do like, did your crew set like a 14 foot precast box? I mean, if we had a precast box, we'd have something you had to do. We've done that before.
So with that being said, is it feasible to, let's say, Schrader set, set a precast box or is that against his
So the main thing.
Scope of competition?
It's pretty, so they come, they usually come in six foot barrel sections. You need, you know, obviously it's 14 foot long span box. We would rent a crane, we'd have the, the trench set back, over excavate, set backfill, compact it, center grade. Then you just start setting boxes basically from the downstream end going up. And then once it's done, you just strap them together with bolts. There's bolts that you strap on either side. Then the main thing then is just backfilling. So if you guys have a way to, you know, backfill and everything, it's bolting them together, it's no big deal. It's just getting it set, getting, getting the, the grade set correctly and compacted and then getting the section set after that, it's just back.
So with that being said, Mike, like you said, you rent a crane, do we have an operator that's capable of that or?
So you rent the crane and the operator.
And the operator, so it would be a Schrader type thing or something like that, operator, some other company that would come with a crane and an operator, per se, and, yeah. And that's more efficient, I mean, cost wise?
Um, then pouring a box, um, I would say they're costs similar. The nice thing with the precast box is you're in and out a week to 10 days. And if you, once you tear the bridge out, if, you know, you'll order the precast, precast sections before, ahead of time. Schedule a delivery date, you tear out, you over excavate, uh, compact the backfill and just, I mean, it's literally two weeks, less than two weeks, you'd be done.
And if you pour it in place, it takes a set for like 21 days before it's used.
Yeah, so then you'll have, you usually have a pour for the floor. Then you have a pour for the walls and you have a pour for the ceiling. So you're talking about three different pours, plus let they get to strength, it'd be at least four or five weeks, depending on the size of it.
About same cost.
I would say it just depends, but technically they say precast is a little bit more expensive. But you also, you're, the, the, the precast elements are being cast in a factory under like pristine conditions, right?
And they're being cured before they're actually being put to use too, so. Let me start hammering down, do we have a compact with the excavator?
We, we typically would rent one, but yeah.
So that's something we want to look at, do we have an excavator that we could put one on or?
Well, let's wait and see if we need a box cord first.
Okay, yeah, I, I, I would venture to take a look at that, yeah.
Like some of these fans, uh, you know, thirty feet, I, I can't imagine you could give a huge box core for that. Usually about fourteen feet is about as wide as we get.
Okay. So the current one on High Bridge is, what's the length of that? That's on page, yeah, this is on the same page. Is there a measurement on that? No. It just says will be replaced, so there's not a measurement on that. That they're starting next week, am I correct in that?
It's scheduled, we removed on the.
So if I go look at this bridges, just to make sure I got the right one, is this number, bridge number, is that attached to that bridge somewhere that I need, I can find it? See it? No.
But if you look at a map, the first two numbers are, are the, is the section.
Yeah.
And then the next number is, if you look at the section, you go across the top line of the section. So the, like the thirty five oh one, you know, you just stay up in the northwest corner of the section. You go down just a hair and there, that's where it is.
So like we do the same thing, so if you look in the, the northwest corner of the section, so if you find the section number you're in, start the northwest corner, the first number is the tenths of miles you go to the east. The second number is the tenths of the miles you go.
South. And that's the same way here?
Yes.
So it'd be twenty tenths of a mile, so that's two miles. Am I right saying that? On number four.
Number four, no, it's in section twenty.
Yeah, section twenty.
You go eight tenths of a mile east, and then eight tenths of a mile south.
That's what the eight, eight stands for.
The first two numbers is your section.
Can't we make it simple? Can't we put a number on that bridge?
Well, it is a federal highway number, but that won't.
So that won't help either.
So the third, third number goes across the top and the second, and the fourth number goes down. Third number goes across and the fourth number goes down.
Yes.
Okay.
It should be very similar to how your nine oh one addressant works.
Mike knows all about that.
Okay. So are, we're, we're, yeah, I, I would, I would venture to say, yeah, either, either way, we should proceed with the patching, letting bids, whatever you would call it.
Yeah, so the, the only thing you probably have to do is you will have to do at some point, I'm sure you guys do budget amendments, you'll have to do a budget amendment to add money to your four sixty seven light item and then your, your bridge maintenance light item. That's a significant amount of maintenance when you take a bridge out and replace it, that's.
I, I, I guess that I also would proceed if you're recommending that three hundred and sixty four, that's number one, to proceed with that. And if we can still work the number, we think we are, funding is available, if we can still work that number.
Yeah, so I think that what you probably do is once you get your patching bids in, if that, you know, where that falls compared to your four hundred and fifty thousand estimate, that'd be where you decide whether, you know, you, you, we could definitely design it, at some point it needs to be designed anyway.
Yeah.
Once you figure out what your, that's the blind share of the money you're going to spend is the patching. That comes in with good pricing, then you could either add another bridge or add that seal coating work, so.
Yeah, that's minimal, I mean, that's, that's something maybe we can work in.
And if we get that yet this fall, then we'll know what kind of money we're talking about. And if we can add a second bridge or, like you say, patching, we're going to go to, are we going to bid both patching jobs? So we know what the second one might cost?
I think we're only doing the one patching job on Y sixty one, two hundred and fiftieth.
Right, yeah.
So we're going to bid that one, figure out what the pricing is on that, we'll have the annual report done. So we can do our analysis of our carryover balances, see where that's tracking with those two pieces of information. Then I think the board can decide how much extra work you want to add.
Sure.
Whether it's one bridge, two bridges, or the seal coat work. But the patching is going to be done regardless for our, patching and one bridge is going to happen for sure, right?
That's my prediction, yes.
You know, we don't have to spend the money by July next year. I mean, if this comes in cheap and you want to do another patching job, we can, it can be in the next fiscal year too. It doesn't, doesn't have to be right away.
So like this seal coating, I guess maybe this may be dumb question, but this, like these seal coating projects, if we had carryover from our gravel budget from last year, could you use that gravel budget money to do them two seal coating projects? Is that legal?
It can't come out of that line item, we'd have to move it, but yeah, you can use that.
So yeah, like, is it legal to do, sure, it's not illegal, it's just, what happens is there's four budget categories. Roadway maintenance, in rock, in seal coating is all in the same category. So as long as that category doesn't go over budget, you wouldn't have to adjust it. That category is multiple line items.
Per se, if we talk about the budget thing and we go over this thing and there was carryover here, we could have used, if it was the same category, we could have used to do them seal, two seal coat projects.
Yes.
I mean, per se, if there's thirty thousand dollars between.
As long as it's maintenance work, you don't have to do a resolution to change your five year program. Seal coating considered maintenance, paving two inches or less of hot mixed asphalt is considered maintenance. So as long as you're, the type of work is considered maintenance, you could use, you could use that money for the same category of work item.
And you're talking about the seal coating on Seventeenth Avenue and Green Island.
Mm-hmm. Them are the ones that Todd mentioned earlier, yeah. I, I marked that thirty third street off right away because that's Lisa's road, so we don't need to worry about that one. I actually called her and said, why is your road that bad or what? No.
Probably not making the work some days, that's not good.
That's, that, you know, we could probably get bids in within a couple of weeks and guess what, you send it out next week sometime.
Yeah, I don't think I'm right on next week, I have a lot of stuff on the plate right now, I'll get it as soon as I can.
Usually give them two weeks to bid, so.
Two or three weeks, yeah.
They'll be awfully busy this time of year too, so.
I mean, is, again, Mike, I know you're busy, is that something that Alex can participate in and send them out or send the bids out? Or is, or is it something he's not familiar with and?
Yeah, sure you could do it, I just don't know if he'd have the time either. I don't know whether Alex is paying.
I haven't talked to him.
I have talked to him, but I spent, yeah. I mean, just so we don't forget, we have the capability of using him so we can, if he can help you out. Take some, yeah, he can take some load off of you, you know?
Yeah, he's got to go out and survey the first two for sure, so we can do the hydraulics, so we know what size structure to put here, what type of structure. But that's all that got to happen before we can do the design, so. I'll email Alex about that.
Okay.
Or do you want to?
He did tell me a week or so ago that he was just about completed with the, is it one eighty eight?
You mean the zero bridge?
Zero, zero tonnage? I did hear that, you know.
Any salvage on it?
Uh, there's four thirty six inch beams that are pretty decent yet, and then some of the back.
So, do you, do you bring that back here or where do you store that or do you bring it to the yard or something?
The plank came back to the yard, but those thirty six inch beams are sixty foot long. We stack them up in the ditch out there for now.
So if I send a crew or we can pick them up.
Oh, no. Now there's a thought.
We'd be interested, somebody's there for?
There's only four, sixty footers, thirty six inch.
But they recondition, we recondition them too, don't we, Mike, and then reuse them if we can or don't we do reconditioning?
Yeah.
He's trying to make a deal.
A little conflict of interest.
Yeah. Which county are we working for today? Which county are we working for today? Yeah, hey, what do you want to give now, Tony? I, I guess one other thing I forgot earlier, Mike, when you were here, I got a question on the, on the claims. I see the eight hundred and eighty bags of chloride. Now, I know I questioned that last year again, do, do, we can't buy in bulk, that doesn't work or that doesn't?
Well, okay, you can get it in bulk, but then the totes you have to pay a deposit on. And we keep bags of chloride on hand, we don't use everything out every year. So then if you have totes from this company and then you get a different company next year, you know, you run into that. The other thing is how do you empty the, how do you empty the totes? Well, the guys were talking, well, we could use five gallon pails to take it out of the top. Well, then you might as well just use bags, it's a lot simpler to have a bag.
Yeah, I didn't know if there was a cost difference that was over, override, yeah.
We buy bags, eight hundred and eighty is like a truckload, a full truckload. The nice thing about bags is, so we mix a batch, I'm assuming it's the same thing, the guys have accounted by the number of bags. They mix so many scoops of sand, so many scoops of salt, so many bags of chloride. So it's a, there's a known formula. The other thing is, is if, if chloride, if you, if it gets to air, it kind of moisture turns to a brick.
Sure, makes sense.
You got to keep, you got to keep it dry, keep the air out of it. So if you get a tote, you got to make sure you get sealed up properly because it'll get hard and get like a brick.
Yeah, mine's sort of this high, so then get to the bottom of it or, or then you pick them up and try to drain it out of the bottom of them, I, I don't know. I'm not.
No, that's fine, that's perfect answer, that's all I needed.
Price difference, I think bags are the way you should.
Yeah, makes sense.
You actually get seventeen hundred bags, didn't you?
Right, we get, we get four truckloads.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what we'll.
Yeah, see, that's, so when I, because I looked at that, so I was like, did we, because I looked at what, what the bid was last year. And yeah, it was ten seventy three bag and I went, oh, then I was like, oh, God, you get seventeen hundred bags.
Yep, and then I, yeah, the only thing I had was a plank and you said you'll use them anyway, so. Okay, any other questions or comments for Todd or Mike?
I got one other thing, I was talking to Mike about the site distance check. So this is what we use for our site distance traffic study stuff. And the, so we check two things, one is if a car is on the road and it's like cresting a hill. So you check the distance, you can see an object in the road, you see if you have enough time to react to it and then stop. So that was checked. And then also, if, if I'm the vehicle sitting at a, whether it's an intersection or a driveway, I sit in the intersection and I look right and left, whether I'm looking right to make a right hand turn or I'm looking to make a left hand turn. So there's two different measurements, those are the site distance travels. So basically, everything would, is in compliance with a minimum, except for the left hand turning movement out of the driveway. Is that six hundred and forty six feet required is six hundred and ten. So that's the one that's the closest. And like, I don't know if you remember, but, so you, there's already a little bit of factor safety in these numbers in the tables, the minimum site, site distances. Distances, but if you want to add in like a factor, another factor safety, you could say, you got to be within a hundred and ten percent or a hundred and twenty percent of what you want to do. But right now, all the site distances check out, they're fine. So it'd just be, if you want to draft a policy that says, when we evaluate driveways for signage replacement, the side distances have to be in accordance with this handbook or a hundred and ten percent of the minimums, whatever you want to do. But I would recommend you have a policy so you treat all applications the same.
I would.
Is that venture? Is it the factor in there for the speed?
Yes.
Okay.
So depending on the posted speed, there's, it's a table and there's a bunch of different distances depending on, I think it's five mile an hour increments it gives the table, so.
But of course, we all know that out in the middle of nowhere on a good road, people ignore that fifty five or that thirty five.
Yeah, that's a suggestion.
What are they ignoring when they do that?
The speed limit.
And what is, though, it's posted on the signs, the only thing I'll say, you can put up all the signs you want.
Absolutely.
Still got to be able to import it.
But anyway, that's the information, so you guys decide what you want to do.
I think we should certainly have a policy so we're fair and.
I do too.
Straight across the line, say, here, if we're going to vary from that, then there's a reason for.
And I would appreciate it if you would communicate that with Karen Danzer so that she knows that we have gone and we've done the study, we've looked at everything and, because basically what she said to me, she says, I'm sure it's the way it should be, but she says, it just, I, it just, I get so nervous whenever I get to the.
Is there any?
The turn.
Anyhow, I mean, the ditches, could they be cut back a little further to make it look better?
Well, that's the only, the only thing I want to double back with Mike about is, so this six hundred and forty six or left hand turning movement, what it, if it's brush or trees that are the restriction and they're in the right of way, we could, we could, you know, say, hey, can this fall maybe send a crew out, try and trim more of that back so you increase the site distance. If it's not that, it's something else that's causing it, we can't do much about it. But if that's what's causing it, then maybe that would be some mitigation for her to trim that back.
Is that a tornado whistle, by the way?
You get a little choking.
I was just, I was waiting for it to quit, but I didn't.
It's the first Tuesday of the month, they give the tornado siren.
Okay.
So that's posted for fifty miles an hour, what, what would the site distance be say for sixty miles an hour?
Uh, I don't, there isn't a table, we check. Nobody should be going sixty.
She doesn't want anybody going sixty.
Why we want to increase it?
Well, I'm just curious how much.
That's what, yeah, it's a dull edge sword when you repave a road. Uh, looks like it's going up fifty five feet for every five miles an hour, so. It'd be six, uh, six sixty five. It's a recommended speed block or it's posted speed. Posted speed limit of fifty, no, so then it would be even less.
I called the, the Hope of the Schools and they say they don't have a bus going across the bridge right now.
Oh, good.
Oh, that's a good deal.
We lucked out there.
Did you ask them how much the bus weighs?
Well, they're going to say what size bus you want.
Maybe we should ask the bus driver.
Well, the thing is, I don't know what the bus weighs, but you know, in circumstances like this, I mean, we got one or two kids on either side of the bridge that's close. So we're taking a suburban out to get three kids that are on that, that I would normally pick up. Or the route, the route driver would normally pick up on his way into town. So we're actually backtracking and then taking.
Oh, you got to have a CDL to drive the school bus, right?
Yeah.
So wouldn't, and that mean they'd have to weigh over twenty six thousand pounds?
No, you got to have, you got to have, I don't know if you have the CDL, but you need a bus endorsement, which is, you mean, you got to pass all the restrictions and take the required training to.
I think you need that even if it's just suburban, because you're carrying children or that part.
No, well, I, I mean, I've driven a, a school suburban before and I don't have a CDL, but I'm pretty sure, because my mom used to drive school buses. And she used to have to keep a CDL, maybe that's requirement by school district, by school.
I think so, yeah.
Is it on your license anymore?
Yeah, it's online.
You have to go in early and take the bus out and weigh it?
No. I don't. I asked somebody, I asked the bus super, transportation director.
Yeah, this is twenty six thousand.
But if you look, if you look in the past four or five years, how these buses have changed, you know, you've got one that's fifty four capacity and the next one you buy is sixty five capacity and it's got seatbelts and it's got this and that and compartments underneath for storage and, you know, and they just have changed.
So you're going to need a request for quote for two hundred and fifty thousand in the patching. I'm going to email Alex to get the surveys for the hydraulics on those two bridges. And I don't know, do you, you submitted a request for quotes for seal coating work before?
Yeah.
So you, you could do that for the two little stretches there.
Okay, gentlemen, anything else for us or for them?
And then I think, once the annual reports done, I'll bring back some information about the carryover balance, how that's tracked over the years. So you guys can get a handle on how much you feel comfortable.
Well, we need to know what the pass set was and what the forward may look like, you know?
Well, I, I can't predict, predict the future.
No, but I mean, we get it, that's what we're still doing with our five year program, we're kind of projecting anyways over.
So how are we doing for the early use tax set?
So far, we're doing okay. About where we expected it, I think the last payment was, I think it was a hundred thousand dollars short of the payment before that was extra.
Can't do anything else, so you scroll.
Bye, guys.
Yeah, have a good day, gentlemen. Okay, now we're in a work session with, I see Mr. Divine is on the line. Is Marty available? Okay.
He came at the door once.
I seen him.
Okay, I told him that.
He left.
There's in the radar, there's a little rain maybe coming. It looks like it. Sheriff, good. Might be a little too late. Which one?
My highlighted and.
This? I got all kinds of handy, handy, handy notes. I got highlights and notes and yes and no and look and go look and. The first four numbers is the, I can look now. First two is the section number. The third one is across the top and the fourth one is down. They still say we put a tag, a license plate on it.
You ever see the old drawings, kind of like a ship? And down in the corner, there's a little box and it's got these numbers and stuff in it. That tells you exactly, if you lay it out on a wooden floor like they used to, it's the points like from here to here, to here to here. And you point that off that grid and then you take a flexible stick and put it on that. And that's your art.
When they were building ships?
Yeah. And it's supposed all the way across because each one of that backbone is different from the front to the back. They can keep changing. It's all on those pictures from these, you know.
I would hate to engineer that one.
From hundreds of years ago.
Yeah, I think there's a sticker on the bus. It says how much it weighs.
Did I lose everybody? I got muted somehow. Talking to you.
Tom, we can, we can hear you fine. We can hear you fine, Tom. I, I just muted myself. We're waiting for Marty here.
Okay.
Right now, we're just talking about you, so hang on.
Okay, that's fine. You can mute me.
Hey, Mike, can you hear me all right?
Yes, I can.
Okay, great.
I don't know who it was, but I can't.
Well, it's Tebby, I guess, so.
That's that wisp down at the bottom.
Wisp, yeah, so.
I had nine of them on my page. I gotta go to the next page. Oh, there he is. I see.
I don't put my, uh, my face on there because I don't like looking at myself as I'm talking to you guys, so.
I don't blame you.
Don't say it, Mike, okay?
Not saying anything, Steve.
So long, we get, so far, we're getting along, so I'm just gonna leave it there.
There you go. There you go.
We're waiting for Marty. He's coming. I can hear him.
And entering your phone. I just tried to call you.
Oh.
And you're ready, you're ready, your voice failed.
Well, see, I come walking up here, I shut it off. It's all over you here. So vibrated, but I, I have a pocket and it's okay. I was like, you're vibrating.
Now, I'm sitting on it.
What?
I'm sitting on it.
Yeah, that's it.
Hey, Mike, it's Lanny. I'm here with Tom.
Okay, Lanny, thanks.
Yep.
Good morning, Marty. Okay, now we're just waiting for Lisa. She had. Yep, Lanny's.
Lanny, how are you doing?
I'm good.
Good.
So we are here today with, in a work session and we're discussing the Welcome Center. And we have Tom Divine and Lanny and Steve Tebby is also on and Marty's here. So who would like to start? What's our projection? I know it has not been open this year. What are, is our projection, our need? Where do we go forward here or backwards?
Now, what the responsibility of the Tourism Association and what our responsibilities are with, with that building. I know we own it, but it just seems like Marty's down there a lot and.
He should be down there more.
Since it hasn't been used, who really is overseeing it to make sure that some of the problems that we've witnessed and we've had to deal with don't come up again?
Well, as many of you probably know, I'm now currently the chairman of the Jackson County Area Tourism. And we hired on, you actually know then that Tom Divine is our director and then Lanny is our vice chair, right, Lanny?
Oh, Treasurer.
Secretary Treasurer.
Secretary Treasurer. And then we have Wendy. She would be the vice chair. Oh, so that's kind of how we trying to somewhat change the guard here. And I talked a little bit to Tom and Jack, you know, I think we visited just a little bit, I think, about this deal. I think one of my ATV meetings, I think we had with you or whatever. And we talked about that. So I, I shared that with Tom a little bit. And, and Tom had shared with me that we actually have someone going down there. A person in there every day from Sevula. She spends an hour in there cleaning up bugs and doing things like that. And Marty, can you, can you respond to that a little bit?
Uh, the last time I was down there, the, the bugs that I killed were still in the basement floor.
Okay.
You know, I, I've never seen anybody down there, but I usually go down early in the morning. But, um, you remember me telling you the last time we went down there?
Yeah, you said thousands.
Yeah, the bugs were still on the basement floor.
Okay. And lots of them.
Yes, thousands of them. But I think I did kill them finally.
We also had problems with the plumbing.
Right.
Uh, because it needs to have water periodically unless you shut the water off completely.
Yes.
But it caused problems with the water and, and.
I think it needs to be occupied. If, if, if somebody needs to be in there using it.
And if they're not, then we need to decide what we're gonna do with the building.
And I can't speak through what's going on there, but when I was been down there during the day, there's people that pull in there to, to, I would assume to come in to see if it's open, you know.
Hey, Tom, does Sevula have a Welcome Center or anything for the city? No, they don't. So would that be something we could maybe coordinate with them to have some of their people join in out there to help with that? Yeah, might, that'd be a great idea.
I just don't know, you know, I mean, of course, this is not a normal year, that's for sure. And we don't know what's gonna happen going forward. Uh, we hope, we surely hope that things get better a little bit back to normal, but still, we need to discuss the feasibility of that building. And I guess the use. Well, yeah, I mean, do we need it? Or we do, is it, is it an asset to us or is it a deficit to us, you know? Is it a liability to us? Is it an asset to, I, I don't know. I, I need you guys' opinion here. I mean, I know, you've been in that building.
Earlier this year, I was down in that area and I was so ashamed of how it looked. I mean, the grass was, I mean, you could bail it for hay. It was so high. And I just, I thought, good Lord, what kind of an image does that give? When there's that big sign that says Jackson County Welcome Center and it looked like hell.
I got several calls on it to confirm what you say.
Oh, it was awful. The next time I went by, somebody had mowed it, but they just left all the grass laying on there. Didn't look much better, but at least the grass wasn't a foot and a half to two feet tall.
And some of them, like, because we were switching Daryl Parker and.
Well, I don't care what the reason was. It shouldn't have happened because we have, we've allocated funds to the Tourism Association. That building is their office. There is no reason that that building should look like that. I mean, maybe they don't have it open, but they still have to look at the appearance of that building because it, it reflects an image on Jackson County. And that image was not good.
I agree very much.
That the image or that the mowing was done by conservation. I don't know about next year, but at least they did intermittently, they did mow it.
Oh, because didn't we go and ask them about it?
Yes.
When it hadn't been mowed, we contacted Conservation Board and then they went down and did it.
They did, yeah.
And I think, Tom, if I remember right, you were gonna see, or somebody was going to look into maybe somebody in the area of Sevula area that would volunteer to go out and mow that.
Well, I was, I was at that point where I was gonna go down and mow it. Uh, it's, it's always been mowed in the past by, by Conservation. We've never had to worry about it. And I got those calls too and wasn't aware of. Of course, we, we weren't open. Uh, I wasn't down there because of COVID, so I, I wasn't down there every day, so I didn't see it, so.
Well, we now know that it has to be maintained and upkept. So going forward, I guess our, our discussion still is, what is the future of that building?
My, my suggestion would be, Mike, is that, you know, I think we need to, we as a, as a, I guess the Tourism Association is gonna have to be certain that that building, the appearance of that building actually outside is where it's supposed to be naturally. I would, I would worry about possibly making the decision of what to do with that thing until this COVID thing kind of starts dialing down a little bit. We, as the Tourism Association, was thinking that this COVID deal was gonna be gone already by now. And I just heard this morning on the radio that it appears that Iowa is in the red zone again. And they're looking possibly doing something with the bars and things and shutting that, that kind of thing down. Um, I, but I also believe that the tourism people that are kind of out running around with the, with the muscle cars and doing that kind of thing or whatever, I do think those people are kind of like overseeing all of that and they just do what they're gonna do, you know? So, you know, I know, but we just actually did not know how to handle this because we didn't want to have it to the point where we'd have one or two or three people coming in there. With us there, then we'd have to scrub everything all down. And then we, and then we have to wait till the next people would come down. So that's the reason why we did what we did of what, what it's all about.
It would take a lot more personnel and for safety issues, yeah, so, yeah, I understand.
Yeah, and that's where, where it was at, you know, and that's why we made that decision. And then actually then within this COVID thing, whenever that started, well, then that's when we had the change of the guard. So it's all kind of within the, in the midst of all that, you know what I'm saying? Um, you know, Daryl Parker actually at that point did work for the Conservation Mission. So he actually was part of that to make sure that that was all mowed and things like that. So he is no longer part of the, of the, of this board. So I can kind of see where this would kind of, would, would lapse at this point. Do you agree with me on that, Tom?
Well, yeah, yeah.
Well, we can all see where the ball got dropped a little bit somewhere along the line. We're not pointing any fingers, but we need to move forward, you know, I guess. So where, where do we go? I mean, like you said, I don't want to make any rash decisions, no. Just. You have a suggestion?
Well, we've been, yeah, we've been looking at this for the last couple of years. And the numbers have steadily gone down. We, we've kept track of the visitors. And we, uh, to seven, maybe eight years ago, were getting fifteen hundred visitors a year, which was decent. The last, this last year, we kept track and we did by demographics too, age and all of that. But it was, uh, it was down to six hundred and ninety-five people. So we, and it's steadily been dropping and dropping. And part of what we've been seeing and what we believe is that a lot of people are using, he's right here. This is where they're getting their information. They're not stop, stopping and picking up flyers anymore. But we were gonna use this year, unfortunately, COVID kept it, but we were gonna use this year as kind of a determining of is that trend still going down or are we, you know, still gonna be steady around seven hundred people a year? At seven hundred people, I think it's worth keeping it open. If it's trending downward and, and going to be less than that, I don't think it is. I don't think it's, I don't think it's worth your money or, or our, our money and time to just staff it and keep it open.
Certainly appreciate input.
I agree.
I agree too. But I mean, also had the, the new bridge went in and then the other bridge was closed and that shut down a lot of traffic too, so.
In order for you to get a true reading of that again, it's gonna take two more years to get a true reading of how many people is gonna stop, you know?
Make it look good. People will stop there too, because you know, just well, I do when you go someplace and it doesn't look.
Like anybody's home.
Right, you don't go in. It look, when it looks dirty, you don't go in. And the picket fence around there and the mold on the roof that I took off of there and we did paint it.
I was like, what's left to do? I know we've got, we've got to clean some gutters.
I think the, the fencing around the trash cans need to be cleaned down. Maybe paint the sign again. We painted that, what, four or five years ago, went down there. I think it needs to be painted again, touched up. We did move it out of there. We got, got the old one out. But I think it just, some cleaning up, I think it needs to, needs to be.
So with that being said, what Marty says there, I mean, and, and we're all aware, Tom or Steve, if you drive by or somebody goes down, you could sure see what maintenance projects need to be completed. Um, I heard, if I heard it right, Steve, you're kind of saying that you guys should be taking better care of it? Is that what I heard?
Well, in indirectly, yes. Uh, and what I'm actually saying is that if, you know, I really had no idea personally that grass was being left go and things like that. I don't get down there all that often. But if that's an issue, then we need to, uh, getting someone on board on that and, uh, talking with the Conservation Board and ask them if they're still interested in maintaining that, that grass.
Well, I guess the grass, the sign, if the sign needs to be repainted, who's gonna repaint it? Well, what, what, I mean, I'm not gonna have Marty or Mike run down there and paint that sign. Only that.
No. And, and we actually don't want to have the county spending their money doing that kind of thing. Uh, that should not be part of that. However, the signs will have to be painted. We'll have to go ahead and, and find out who actually can do that. And then, you know, we'd have to submit that then accordingly, so.
Yeah.
Because, you know, we could argue this, you know, that a lot of the other Welcome Centers, not within the area, but within the state of Iowa, have been, some of them have shut down just because it's one of those things that's not viable anymore.
Well, and I guess at this time, there's a lot of that, even social media for you guys is gonna go a long way, I think, to the fact is somebody gonna volunteer to come out here and paint that sign for you that can do a probably a decent job, you know, I don't know.
Yes.
Professional, pay a professional, because they didn't do such a thing. I think there's people out there that are willing to help, looking to, just getting a hold of them, you know?
And I, can I, can I throw something? And I can, I can, um, hire my staff to do that if that's, if that's what needs to be done. But I, um, when I took this position, there's, I, there's nothing in there about, um, doing other than watching and making sure everything's kept up and letting Marty know, because that's what we've always done in the past, let Marty know. And he's done a great job of, of taking care of whatever comes up. But, uh, you know, like the washing the building or something like that, that, nothing was ever, nothing was ever said that that was part of the responsibility. And if that's the case, uh, let's get a clear cut what, what we need to do and I'll be happy to hire staff to do that.
Yeah. Okay, well, I just think we need to keep it presentable, you know, at this time. Like Marty said, I mean, every, that's no different than a house, you know? People's living in, somebody living in it is much different than if it's vacant for six months. That's just the way it is, you know, so.
Well, and then, and the way I see it, if Tom, I guess you and myself or whatever, if we go ahead and we, we find something that needs to be handled with that, we get a hold of Marty then. And that's, that's the way it should be done. And then. we get a hold of Marty then. And that's, that's the way it should be done. And then, and have the girl that, that's been going down in there every week or every day and then checking things over and making her aware of what, what needs kind of be, what has, needs to be done down there possibly more than that, because she may not know. So.
Yeah, you're correct.
So I assume it's not going to, you're not going to open it up this year then is what I'm hearing?
We, we really don't know for sure what's
It's only good.
It's, you know, we initially thought that we were going to open this thing in September to get involved with the, with the leaf. You know, everyone coming by, looking at leaves and things like that. And now all at once, and this, this COVID thing starts kicking up again. So now we're sitting here kind of like, now where do we go? What do we do? You know? So, you know,
The COVID has gone drastically in the last week and a half.
What, what was that, Jack, again?
Pardon?
He didn't hear you.
Again, I'm sorry. I missed that.
Last week and a half in Jackson County, the COVID cases are fine deadly. And so it, it's, it's right there with us.
Yeah, it is.
I have one more question then in regards to who is coming and checking on the building. Will she continue to do that?
Yes, absolutely. She lives in Sebelo and, and she did, uh, she did a, we had, we had a gentleman that had it for, did it for 19 years. And Dick was very good at that. And he decided this spring that he didn't want to do that anymore. And, and Beth has come in and so, you know, Dick knew what needed to be done. Dick did what needed to be done, but Dick's no longer with us. So there's also that, that curve of, it was, it was all automatic before, but now we'd need to give a little direction.
I guess I see that she needs, we need to share Marty's cell phone number with her because
Yes.
We'd like to be notified right away.
And we want her number too.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
Her name and number.
Yeah.
I'll get, I'll get your best number. Yeah, she's got Marty's number. I've given that to her. So, yeah.
And what we'll do is we'll just, we'll just be more explicit with her that this is kind of what we need at that point. And if the grass, actually, if the grass isn't mowed, Tom, I think we really actually need to know about that. Don't you agree?
Yeah.
You know, from, from, from her or whatever. So, so she should actually really actually have my number as well.
She, she was told by me that it was going, the grass was going to be taken care of. And I was in, I was talking with County Conservation. They were doing everything they could to get down there. They were behind and they were short staffed. So.
I see. Sure.
I guess my big concern is, it seemed like there for a while, Marty was going down there all the time. And when he goes down, that takes him away from our courthouse and our other buildings.
Right.
We have Marty and, that are doing maintenance for the county and we can't constantly be having Marty shipped to Sebelo and leaving his responsibilities here and at the senior center and at the other buildings that we own. I mean, there's got to be a limit to how much time he's allowed.
Why wasn't Marty calling Tom?
Who's Tom?
Who's Tom?
Tom Devine.
Well, because Tom, Tom was calling me. That's why. I don't go down there. I never hardly go down there until somebody calls and tells me something's wrong, then I go down.
I guess we're gonna
The bug thing, I kind of did on my own because it was, it was nasty. I'm going to lay that floor in the basement down there. I come back the next day and the floor was just, there were thousands of bugs on the floor. And they just kept coming and coming and coming. And I, I don't know, I bombed it.
Four times.
Three or four or five times. And then finally I bought some stuff to spray around the outside of the building and I think that took care of it. I think they were coming in the back door. They weren't. I think they were, because I sprayed back there and then the next day or the following day after that, I went down there and nothing was moving.
Wow. So I think it's as simple as this. I, I listened to it and I says, I think it's just better communication again, a lack of communication we have here with your person that stops there daily. If it's something minimal, if it's a doorknob, if it's something, a toilet plunger or something that can be fixed locally, we'll hire it done down there and have it done. We can't have Marty running down there for, well, you know, I mean, he goes and it takes an hour to get there and he's got to stop and get coffee. Takes another half hour and he goes. But I'm just saying, you know what I mean? I mean, I mean, it is a, it is a situation where some of this minimal stuff, if, if your lady that stops there can pass on to, you know, whoever and we can get it taken care of. It's just, we just start communicating a little better here and we, we under, and we understand now probably it's not going to open. So, you know.
Unless things change dramatically here. So.
Yeah.
But really you can kind of, I talked to, they say that after the election, this COVID thing is going to go away. What do you think, Mike?
I'm not going to comment. That's what
Gone away. That's why it's red.
I'm not going to comment, you know? I mean, one day you had 500 and some cases in the book, the next day you had eight, the next day you had nine. You know, you read the paper every day and it's going like, well, it depends on how many tests you take. That's going to determine how many positive cases you have.
I think we just have to make a reason for it not to be open and that Marty or somebody is going to have to go down, winterize the facility so that it's not a constant concern.
And then when we go to open it, we need to go down there a couple of weeks before you're open it, change the, fix the lights in the bathroom and stuff like that. The fan room rattles terribly bad. There's no lights in the men's restroom at all the last time I was down there. And just do some ballast work and light bulb work, I think would really help. Paint the picket fence around the receptacles outside. And then other than that, the building looks pretty good, I think.
Yeah.
Yeah. Clean the garden.
Yep. Well, personally, I think, you know, we hate to make any decisions here within the COVID thing here at this point, you know, but I, I do understand we need to look forward within the next year to what we're, what's going to happen with the Welcome Center. I understand that as well.
Well, I guess we all got enough information about it. Well, you know,
Okay.
New ideas or anything else that we can, we wanted to pursue, we'll keep each other contacted.
Sounds great.
Good.
Tom, have you been out to the Pat Key property at all?
I was out there on June 30th was the last time I was out there.
So I was just wondering if you've seen what's been down there, what's going on.
There was, at, at that point, there were, there was a lot less off that property than I was hoping to see. So.
I know some of, we had, somebody was supposed to come pick up some junk and somebody else was going to come in and cut it and bail it to get rid of the grass and stuff. So it should be looking better.
And, and I've got somebody that wants to help with the, volunteer to help with the mowing of the trails down there that lives just down around the corner. But we, I've been waiting with the Conservation to get the form that they need to get signed and
Yeah, some issues with that for insurance reasons. We're not sure if we'll go there. So.
Yeah. Okay. That's available. We need it.
All right. Thanks.
Okay. You bet.
Thanks, guys. Thanks, gentlemen.
You bet. Thank you.
Okay. So I think our work sessions are complete. Is there any other unfinished business?
Like I said, as far as the jail project, we, I talked to John Hanson again the other day and he's working with Marla up at ECIA to get a pamphlet put together and present to us. And then we can make our comments and changes that we'd like. They had a decat meeting on last Friday. Funds are, are quite different than they were in the past, but they, every, the project that they are doing grade level reading and as far as the decat program, keeping youth in the system with their parents is, is working great. The numbers or percentages are good. The, they're also, the testing of maybe the mental issues coming forward at a younger age is really working well. They're, they're seeing cases. The problem is, again, to have the funding to correct what is, whatever they find, you know, so. It's, it's a work in progress. I guess I hate to say it. I hate to say, but one of our members is retiring also in December. Mr. Phil Tabor is not going to be on the decat board anymore. He's retired. So. So you're aware of that. Phil has been around here for a long time and, and has been an asset to, to the board, I believe. He's very informational. You get a lot of stuff there. So otherwise, I don't know if I have any other boards I need to report on. The sprinkler system.
And we had workforce yesterday and they hired the youth coordinator for Iowa workforce. They hired EQUIS to do that. There'll be more information coming out on that. Early childhood Iowa met yesterday and the, one of the programs that we had was the Dolly Parton Imaginary Library and Carolyn Brady Camp gave a report on Jackson County. And I can't remember her name from Clinton County gave, oh, Pat Heinrichsen gave a report on Clinton County. And I believe, I should have kept my book over here, but I think that they said that in Jackson County, it costs about $700, $7,500 a month to send out all the books that they're sending out. We're, we're way over the amount of books that they're sending out to children in, in Clinton County. It's, it's amazing.
Wow.
So.
I mean, Clinton's got a lot more people than we do too.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm gonna
They started theirs a couple of years after we did ours.
I'm going to apologize in advance here. If all of a sudden I go out, my thing says I just have 10% and I had 95 when I come in. So I don't know what's going on. I have so much. I am talking too much. It's been a long, we started at eight o'clock. Don't forget that.
Anyway, that happened. That was part of our meeting just today.
I guess the only other thing, I'm sorry, go ahead.
And I guess, I'm, we're, I don't know what's up with PayCap. We got that resolution that we have to approve. And we need to discuss that and see what, how we need to move forward with that.
It's on next week's agenda.
That's all I have.
No, the only other thing I have that's on here that says tabled was the Jackson County, Andrew Jackson Care Sprinkler System. Lisa and I met with the inspector last time and we learned
A lot.
A lot. And we're going to learn a lot more. But we are, we are in the process of getting in compliance and he's going to come with a full report. And we need to very carefully look at that and see where we go forward with that. South Main Project, we have not heard back from the city yet. Is that correct?
We didn't pass that resolution.
Which?
We were working in 2080.
We passed it. We forwarded to them and we haven't heard back.
The only other thing that I would suggest is maybe we need to have a work session to discuss the major like project. I think we need to be discussing that with Sarah.
I think so too.
Yep. So I would suggest that at some point we schedule a work session and let's talk about it.
We were also going to have a work session, budget work session that was going to be separate from ours Tuesday, because they've been getting rather long. So maybe we can schedule them together or something. Any other business before the board?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to adjourn. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose, nay. Motion carried. Meeting adjourned.